...twelfth and we're convening the Bennington Select Board at the firehouse. It's now 6:00 PM, our designated time. We meet here twice a month, the second Monday and the last Monday of each month. Without further ado, I will first introduce my colleagues from the left. Go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Tom Campbell.
Hi, I'm Michael Ken.
Tom Jacobs.
Jim Carroll.
This is Sharon Brush.
And John McFadden is on the road, will be absent tonight, and unfortunately Justin Corcoran let me know a bit ago that he's not feeling well. He's under the weather, he's practicing for the flu season, I guess. Stu Hurd?
I'm Stu Hurd, town manager.
Great. And Linda Bermudez, who is our reporter, taking excellent minutes. That being said, could you all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
So John, be able to tell us if there really is a Nebraska?
That's right. John is hoping to join us for the executive session a little bit later, depending upon which way the wind's blowing in Nebraska. So at this point, we do have a consent agenda containing our minutes from the September 28th, 2015 meeting and the warrants that are being circulated. I will entertain a motion for consideration.
I move that we approve the warrants and minutes I submitted.
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions, concerns, thoughts, modifications? The nods of heads indicate no, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
It passes unanimously to five, voting in favor. We now have a citizens' comment period. It's, we're moving ahead of schedule, but we limit it to 15 minutes. And if I could ask Mary and Rick, if you'd like to step up?
Good evening again, and Rick and I are back before you in regards to the solar project up off of Harwood Hill. We are here to request the Select Board to write a letter, the Chelsea project, which is in conjunction with the Apple Hill, which you wrote, which at that special meeting, you opposed both as a whole together. We are requesting that because the Public Service Board will be taking this up for a final decision with the deadline tomorrow, and I'm sorry with the holiday weekend, we're to the 13th hour, but we are requesting that the Board reiterates to the Public Service Board their opposition, as was stated in that meeting, to the Public Service Board for their consideration as they deliberate. My understanding that as they deliberate, each letter that goes to them will be strongly considered. Each will be, I believe, read at the hearing as they're making their decision. So it is a way that you can all respectfully weigh in once again in the final hour.
Is it a reiteration of what they already have before the meeting?
Well, you, I think, had done, it is, but it's important because that is one more time that you have taken the time as town leaders here in Bennington, that you would like to see, you know, obviously some changes. But at this point, it can't be really discussed in the letter about things that we could do. It is, you are in opposition because that is originally what you sent. If, you know, in the future, other proposals come, you know, hopefully there'll be a working landscape at that time of how you get through the process respectfully for all sides. So at this point, we are respectfully asking that the Select Board does a let, submits a letter by tomorrow, noon time, and I know...
I thought only lawyers got that. Glad to see the Select Board be joining that type of challenge. Is there a, and I think this probably should be done by either a consensus or a motion, but I will entertain either.
Well, I would make a motion, and I've just been thinking about the wording of this.
Please read.
The Bennington Select Board, let me suggest this to my colleagues. The Bennington Select Board most strongly reiterates its opposition to the Chelsea and Apple Hill solar array as currently planned, and states its displeasure that the Public Service Board appears to write roughshod over the opinions of citizens and the town of Bennington.
I'd like to add a little to that if I may.
You want to, we need a second of one.
I'll second the motion.
There's a second for discussion. Discussion on the motion.
Would I be able to weigh in, or are you just in discussion amongst yourselves?
We'll have both. Let me get the Select Board first, and then I think this is a community effort in some contexts, and you're part of that subcommittee de facto anyway, so go ahead.
I would like to add language, if I may, that would suggest that, you know, irreparable harm, or at least long-term harm, would be done to the beauty and aesthetic.
We've already stated that in our previous, in our previous letter. We can restate that.
And I think in addition to that, beyond the aesthetic impact, is the long-term economic impact. And that is to say, what I, let me expand on that, is that with this black slash on the side of this mountain, the potential for people that are visiting to come to see how beautiful Vermont is, will see this slash and saying, wow, that's really ugly.
Yeah. It's kind of hard to put that into words that will fit into a letter.
I understand that, but I think that, you know, the important point that I want to make is that the economic impact of something on this scale, 27 acres, the largest solar array that the state of Vermont has thus far seen, and the impact that it would have to the aesthetic value of this part of the state is huge.
Put it into concise words.
I'll do my best, but not right at this minute.
Stu, what, I'm struggling a little bit with what Rob submitted on behalf of the town. Was that just about Apple Hill?
Yes, we intervened only in the Apple Hill project. Chelsea had already passed for us.
And so what's still open at this point? I mean, it must be that this new information, the opportunity for new information in this has closed long ago.
Both are still open, but it would be important because the Board, the members that were there at the special meeting unanimously voted to oppose both projects together. And though you don't technically have standing in the Chelsea project, it would be most important for them to hear on the Chelsea project as an individual project, as part of the whole of the two projects together, of the 27 contiguous acres, is that you are in opposition the way it is at this point. I would also say in respect to what Jim Carroll said in regards to the language, I think if we reiterated or repeated the very language that was put out in the motion that Michael made at that special meeting, I think that would enhance the language. I think that could be repeated because it talks about the scenic impact and other pieces within. So I would say that to be reiterated within the letter would probably be most appropriate.
So but based on the draft decision-
The scenic and economic value.
That we saw that Tousley, Clerk Tousley circulated, I don't know if that's public information, but it must be, right?
Yep, it is.
So the draft version from the Public Service Board looked like they were going to approve it in all, at all angles. It looked like they were going to basically say that they weren't accepting any of the arguments against. And I wonder if at this point, if the most we could hope for is to really get their attention and say, look, it's not good enough, you need to screen this, you need to take care of the neighbors. It feels unlikely that we'd be able to stop it at this point.
Well, I don't, I mean, you never know. I mean, it's a hard thing to stop. And I think that to reiterate what you said in the beginning and why you went for intervening status should be done with certainly Chelsea and most likely with Apple Hill. They're, they've come, they're so close together at this point, even though they started the whole process months and months apart, it's amazing how they sort of come together. So what I think that the Board should do now, and certainly people that think that this is just not an appropriate site, is to state exactly what we did months ago with our opposition to the whole 27 acres. And that's going to weigh in with the Public Service Board. That's just something that we have to keep doing and let them know exactly. I think that everybody here has good points.
And this is the last opportunity to weigh in. And again, it's not at this point about us telling them to look at the screening or that. It is where we are in the project because of the process or lack thereof, the process or the disrespectful process. It's about how we get to our renewables in a good manner that supports our citizens as well as getting to our renewable goals.
But if at this point, we ask them to stop it and they're just, that's just not happening, it feels to me like it would be better to ask for something that might be realistic, something that might be within their control.
I think the statement is, it's not over till the fat lady sings. So I am...
Could you repeat the motion again, just a little?
Well, I think, I don't have the wording of the original motion that we passed the night of the special meeting, but I would see that wording as the introduction to this. And this wording, to follow that, paragraph two if you want, "The Select Board of Bennington, the Bennington Select Board reiterates most strongly its opposition to the Apple, to the Chelsea, Apple Hill solar array as currently planned." The Select Board of Bennington, "The Bennington Select Board also states its displeasure that the Public Service Board appears to write," and I've chosen these words carefully, "appears to write roughshod over the opinions of its citizens and of the town of Bennington."
I'd like to add just a few words, if I may, Mike.
I know. So let me hear.
Do you want to?
When in doubt, leave it out.
Followed by the Select Board, "The elected representatives of the people of Bennington."
I don't think that-
Maybe superfluous, but I think it underscore, I think it underscored it. "We are the elected representatives of the people of Bennington."
So you say it to me again.
Following the Select Board, "We, the elected representatives of the people of Bennington."
Are any other comments, concerns? For the record, I have to reuse myself?
I know.
For these unfortunate reasons.
Will we be able to have a vote?
Yeah.
We won't, okay. So there's no appetite on this board to sort of direct them, in particular, towards something that might be achievable at this point, in terms of, maybe we can stop it, but if we can't stop it-
Do you have an alternative?
What would that be?
Well, I would like to see a screening plan before they get the permit, instead of having them ask for the permit and then do a screening plan afterwards, which is, I think, the proposal at this point.
I think it is.
So I'm not sure of the language, but it might be...
I'll say again, you're a nice guy. I don't want to be nice on this one, but that's my opinion.
I'll second that.
Well, might you have another bite of the apple, in any event, relative to that concern?
We might.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? Do you have it, Linda? Is it sufficient?
I will, is it adequate that I give it to you before we end tonight?
Yep.
Okay. But we're voting on, essentially, the spirit and the essential wording of the motion.
The motion, as I understood it, was to incorporate, not by reference, but by specific enumeration, the language of that decision of the Board two months ago, and to follow that with that language relative to the concern that the citizens have been not heard relative to the process.
Yeah. I have to do this in the words of Ew Breener when he played the Pharaoh in the Ten Commandments. I just want to say, so let it be written, so let it be done.
I wonder, I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to blabber this. Can we take one more minute on this?
Yes.
It's a stylistic point, but it's hard to say they've run roughshod over the entire process. So maybe I'm mincing words here, but perhaps that last sentence could be more like, "We strenuously request that they consider our comments," or that, you know, "that our concerns be addressed in the permitting of this project." I mean, it feels a little bit like-
To me, it's the pleasure of the Board.
It feels a little bit like we're calling names-
Have you read some of the comments back and forth from the-
I have.
The developers?
Oh, the developers, some, yeah.
Yeah. I would not want to be lying under the hooves of their horses.
Yeah, it's probably not worth the laboring. I mean, Tom's point is probably good. If we slow it down at all, hopefully we'll get a chance to do some serious screening on it, so.
I will move the question. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I think if I, my aye. You have four, and you have one abstaining. That will be dictated, signed tomorrow.
One question. How does this get delivered to the Public Service?
Let's go through council.
Does it go by email, or is it?
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take a letter from, by email.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
Yeah, I mean, you'll send that letter right correctly to the Public Service Board, and you also could send it to Libby Harris. I'll provide you with her email.
I think it has to go to everyone that's here.
Excuse me?
Everyone that has appeared, or, you know, so that would go to her.
Rob will know where to send it, or who to send it to.
Yep.
But the timeframe should hopefully be by noonish tomorrow, and we're sorry for this long weekend challenge once again, but-
It's fine.
Okay.
But that was great. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing it to us.
Other folks from the citizenry? Loyal, could you address the word?
Hello, my name's Loyal Weska. I reside in Bennington. Stu Hurd, just so for the record, I double-checked it. Traffic citations are separate from criminal citations. And right now, as of nine o'clock this morning, we're at 6,548 arrests. Traffic citations do not get a case number unless one or two things happen, the people fight the ticket, or they don't pay their fine and a bench warrant gets issued. And I'm still wondering how we're coming along with the thousand-foot law.
Hate to keep kicking the can down that proverbial road, but it would suggest that we're going to have the police chief come in and speak with us, probably in early November, relative to the concerns that you raised, and basically an annual report. And at that point, you could certainly raise that issue again, and we can talk about the ability of the Board, both jurisdictionally and enforceability-wise, to deal with that issue.
Okay.
Because we, and I hope you did see, as reported in the paper, the effort that the town is going to, relative to landlords' more active involvement, relative to background checks and maintenance of their properties. That in itself is going to go a long way relative to being a concern, relative to footage, et cetera. It's a lot easier to deal with the quality of the tenant and the property, more so than the fact of a thousand-foot scenario.
Thank you, I appreciate it. The other question I want to ask you, if you guys would do, put them triangle signs that says state law on the crosswalk from Grandview Street and South Street, because cars are still failing to yield right of way to pedestrians. And the other one I would like to have put down by Hillside Street and South Street, because they fail to yield there, and they're doing sometimes 35 and 40 miles an hour in a 25 mile an hour zone.
Stu, do you have thought about those signs that are going to be coming up pretty soon anyway, but-
Yeah, the ones we're placing in the middle of the crosswalks, those will be removed in time for winter. And if, in fact, we don't have the appropriate warning signs at those two crosswalks, we can take a look at that. We should have. There are the triangular yellow signs that generally warn of a crosswalk.
Okay.
Are those accurate numbers, though, with respect to the number of arrests?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't know.
I get it off the scanner. It says incident number, the last four. That's where I get it from.
You said 6,000 arrests?
Yes. They are arrests.
That's better than half, or better, almost half, the population of Bennington would be under arrest.
Yeah, I understand that, but that was as of nine o'clock this morning. We've still got 12 more days to go of the month. At the end of last month, we hit 700 arrests per month on average for Bennington. That's with the PD. That's not coming with the state or town.
Your concerns, your concerns are well-stated, and we receive them. I just, also, I just want to comment that we live in a very healthy and safe town, notwithstanding these numbers. We should be very proud of our law enforcement and also the citizens, because it's not an easy situation in today's world. And frankly, we're, again, very fortunate right now to be in a, in an environment that there is an amount of respect for both the citizen and the law enforcement folks.
Oh, yeah, the cops are doing what they're supposed to do. Maybe you can get the courts to start making stiffer sentences.
We can't go there tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Other citizens, thank you for visiting with us tonight, and we will look forward to next time we talk with the, with the folks. We have a shorter agenda tonight for a couple of reasons. One, that we have a executive session relative to personal matter, but we do have a liquor license change, Stu?
Yes. Stewart's is seeking to change from its current location at Main Street to its new location at 636 Main. The building is now under construction. I think the footings have been forward. They intend to be open by November 18th, so.
They got to move.
They're working practically day and night. This is not a normal liquor license, so with, with the Board's approval, I would just have Tom, as the chair, sign this. It really is just a transfer, and the Liquor Control Board handles all of the formalities.
And if they're not ready to go, the-
They won't.
Their license will expire.
The Liquor Control Board won't issue the license until they're ready to open.
Okay. All in favor, I think we have to have a motion.
Aye.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of signing that transfer? Five in favor, no opposition. A manager's report, Stu?
Yes, I only have one action item, the Fall of Palooza road closings. The BBC has requested the closing of Downtown Streets for Fall of Palooza on October 24th, it's a Saturday, from 6:00 AM until 5:00 PM, and that is Main Street from the four corners, East to Pleasant and Union Streets, School Street from Main to Pleasant, Silver Street from Main to Union, and Valentine Street from Main to Union. This is a pretty standard request, and the Board has approved it in the past.
All in favor of that road closure?
Aye.
That's five in favor and no opposition to that. Any other business, Stu?
Well, the only, the announcement is, we now, I think, have seven or eight applicants for the Oral Health Commission, yet we have no applicant for the opening position on the Housing Authority at this time. So we're continuing to pursue that, and you folks probably need to think about how you're going to provide the interviews for the Oral Health Commission. It might be tough to get seven of them in before a meeting.
Maybe we do a special?
We could do a special meeting to-
I'd like to do 15 minutes per applicant. Does that seem like about enough time, or too much?
Seems a lot.
Okay.
But 10 to 15 minutes, I think it would leave 15 minutes.
Why don't we set that up? We have, next Monday, the 19th, we have a special meeting for the balance scorecard, following, and I don't want to keep delaying the commission appointments, so I really think we need to have a special meeting. And I don't think it's probably going to be best before the next meeting. I don't think that gives us enough time, unfortunately, unless you feel like we could get together before the Monday, next Monday's special meeting for that purpose. Because I think it's at 5:30 with the town managers, or the town-
Yes, with the staff, the department staff, yeah. I mean, we could do something else that, subsequent to that meeting, that week of the 19th, Tuesday or Wednesday evening, gather at 5:30 at the conference room to do the interviews.
Let's see if we can't do next Tuesday, the 20th, at 5:30. Is that all right?
Yeah.
And if you could just schedule them at 15-minute intervals, and if there are, is an individual or two that can't make the meeting, then we can, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I can't make that meeting.
This next week?
I can't do the 20th, yeah.
Okay. What about Wednesday, the 21st?
I also can't do that.
I can't do the 21st.
I think, I think we should also be sure to try to rope in, to rope, make this available to John and Justin, if possible.
Yeah, that's why I want to do it after, in the evening, at 5:30 post. Thursday, the 20th.
Why don't we sort of throw out a doodle to everybody and see?
Yep, why don't we do that? And then we can't, if we can't get all of the applicants that night, we can always put a half hour before the next Board meeting, get those that can. But you're right, that's, since we only have five of us, should, because I know it's difficult for Justin to get here otherwise. I'll be in touch with you to throw out some times and dates.
Okay.
And go from there. Is there any other business to come before the meeting tonight? And I would go-
I have nothing.
Not this evening, no.
Yeah, you queued me onto this, and I went there. Church Insurance, a local employer over in the 210th, South Street, had an open house last week that was very interesting. There are 30, 35, 38 employees there. I think they've grown from 12 to 14 employees since Church came to town. Very nice group of people, very nice, very nice jobs, very nice remodeled and new quarters that they're in in a different part of the building. I frankly enjoyed it. I'm very glad that they're here. The second thing is that, I, most of us know that there was a very successful Oktoberfest on Saturday, and I think that brought a lot of people into town. At the same time, I was heading back from an event with Edie Friday night on the New York side of Route 7, and in order to get onto Route 7, we probably waited for eight minutes. The stream of traffic going east on Route 7 towards Vermont was so heavy and so strong. Watching that couple of hundred pairs of taillights as we were driving back into Bennington, I did not see a lot of them turning right into Bennington, even off 279, but apparently a lot of them did come on Saturday. Did I have to?
That's it.
Yeah, I was going to compliment the Oktoberfest people, too. I thought they did a great job with that event. And I, I was there at a different time than some of my friends, and my experience was that I didn't recognize anybody there, or very few people. I did recognize you, Tom.
Yep. I had to look for you, though.
But everybody I asked seemed to be from someplace else besides Bennington. So that was around noon. I gathered that later on in the afternoon, it was more of a local crowd, but I had a great time, and I thought it was a really great event.
There were still a lot of people. We were out there later in the afternoon, well, not lately, but-
I don't, I don't know how, when I came through town last night, seems like, there was quite a bit of traffic downtown coming through, and it sort of reminded me of a couple of things. One, the amount of traffic was great to see on a Sunday night at 5:30 or so. But our, my concern relative to this, our ordinance relative to landlords on Main Street, you know, maintaining their vacant buildings in some degree of cleanliness and ordliness, and what caused my attention was the Old Heart Theater lot, which, you know, it's pretty dilapidated looking.
The, so there's two different property ordinances that we were looking at, one was vacant property and one was general maintenance. So we have pretty much the vacant property nailed down, but because we were looking at the property maintenance one to go along with that, I'm actually removing some of the general maintenance out of the vacant property ordinance and making sure it's in the general maintenance ordinance, because originally we hadn't, we weren't going to move forward on a general maintenance ordinance. So they're both in the works, but the vacant property one is, is, is probably pretty close and really is at a point where town staff, Stu and Dan, and Larry McLeod and Kevin Goodhue could take a look at it.
That'd be great. I'd like to get that on the agenda sometime in the, in November, just because over the winter, a lot of things go down in at least the view field. The other thing is, it would be nice if some of these stores, we'd coordinate with the schools or art council, the art folks, and put some things in the windows or something to make it look sometimes more inviting than going out of business or vacant store.
I know there has been some work from the BBC, but also some of the colleges as well.
Yeah.
So I can follow up on that and get back to you.
That'd be great.
Sure.
Good, thanks, Loyal.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't have anything else, would you, I will entertain a motion to go into the executive session for personnel matter.
I'll move that.
And that's for the purpose of dealing with a matter that public participation would be inappropriate for either the public or for the matter of course.
Can we also take three minutes for a contact as well?
Okay, yep, in the same context, I'd get just a few minutes. So there is a motion for consideration?
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's five, and we'll have, we'll go into recess for five minutes to allow, two minutes, okay, two minutes, and thank you very much.
Take three.
Thank you very much.